I remember you.
Remember me?
Yes, yes.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Pretty good. You might get a few shots of me today. I'm gonna raise hell. Well, a good hell, though. Um... They need to do something.
Our two minutes, this loan is down in the parking lot, she'll be coming, coming up.
You're Laura, right? Are you Laura?
Emily.
Emily, Emily, Emily. I didn't want to say Laura, sorry. I remember the day. I had a lot of good, good stuff about that article.
Yeah, it came out, it came out really good.
And even got the good side of me. Picture-wise. And now I'm beardless, so... That's another story. Did you have a good Thanksgiving?
I did, I did. Busy weekend.
I've been involved in some kind of IT for twenty-five, almost thirty years now. And this phone still amazes me.
I've got a lot of research on it, you know, there's a lot that I don't even use on my phone, but I have. And I didn't realize I had.
Right.
You know? Smart phone.
I call them part snows.
Which one's interesting? Someone with a mustache right there? Okay.
We're broadcasting. So what we say will be on the video.
Well, I like his, he's going for the Oscar of him, too. Like what he said in the paper and stuff.
Right.
I think we should resign, you know? I said, I'm more, I'm in support of that.
A lot of people are saying the whole council should resign.
Right, they should.
With the exception of Jeanette, but she won't be here much longer anyways.
That's for sure.
Sadly.
Yeah, she's all right. For the most part.
On the other hand, I'm eyeing up that camera over there, that camera right there. Look at the size of that lens.
I know, I love it. And she's a good photographer.
So was I once.
I know. She is really good. She knows her stuff. You don't do wedding stuff, do you, on the side? I'd hire you, girl.
No, but I bet you could shoot somebody from across the bridge. With something like that.
Yeah. And I'll see, like, the macro telephoto lens.
That is a serious lens.
Yeah. What's the farthest shot you've ever taken? That came out pretty good.
Okay, welcome to your council meeting. I would ask everyone to stand, I'm going to give an invocation and a moment of silence, and then would be followed by pledge of allegiance. And my, the invocation tonight will be in honor of Frank Concanon. Many of us know Frank. Frank Concanon passed away on Monday evening at the age of ninety-two. Frank Concanon entered Navy in nineteen forty-three, stationed in South Pacific in final years of World War II. He went to night school for accounting at the University of Pennsylvania. He was co-founder of local accounting firm Concanon, Gallagher, Miller &amp; Company. He was our Lehigh County Controller. He was a city controller for two terms, member of Allentown City Council. He was an active member of the Rotary numerous civic organizations. Frank, if you knew Frank, Frank always lit up everyone's life as his constant joke every time you ran into him. When he would stand in lines when he said it was very good to see him, he would reply, "It is better to be seen than viewed." Frank is one of those people that will always be seen. And he will be seen as a genuine, good man, full of compassion, wisdom, kindness, generosity, and wit. His good spirit lifted all of us, and for what we will always be grateful for. Frank Concanon, please rest in peace, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, Mr. Handlin, please note that all members of city council are here. We will start with courtesy of the floor. If you're obviously representing yourself as an individual, you have three minutes. If you're representing an organization, you have five minutes. Mr. Hirschman, welcome as always.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the invite. But tonight I'm gonna bring up about the water and sewer lease. We've read a lot in the paper lately about a committee, I mean, review of the contract. And this water and sewer lease contract brings up another quite, you know, this thing's been across the city almost a million, a billion dollars over fifty years. And we're putting our grandchildren in a hole before we even move in. And, you know, when I say that, it's because we have to find nine million dollars annually. We're gonna find four and a half, you guys could be going to having four, four and a half million dollar loan. Every, I hope, we have to do it every year, but we have to find money, places, form water, and everybody, everything else that came, storm sewer, that came into the general, another cost, which comes over nine million dollars. And for the two hundred eleven million dollars that we got from the authority, it's gonna cost us seven hundred ninety million dollars, right, right near, it's over billions of dollars. We can't continue this, Mr. President. So I'm asking you after, after holidays, to convene a committee to look at this water and sewer lease, see how we can maybe get it down, or maybe, even maybe agree to change the way we operate water and sewer lease, or maybe it becomes a mandate, and maybe retain ownership, or something, we can continue. And another thing, as you, as we look at the committee that was appointed to review the past contract, or it was in the newspaper, it's over a month. Does anybody know who served on the committee of the water and sewer lease, the water distinction, LCA, there was a committee that reviewed. Does anybody know who served on that committee?
That was, that was a question that was asked before the meeting, and I told that gentleman, we will, we will get to committee members.
Okay, and we greatly appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
We get the committee members' names, and also convene a meeting of city council, right? We do that lease name. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Hirschman.
Yeah, anybody?
Anyone else who served before? Mr. Horn, welcome back.
Thank you. I left with a unanswered question. It has to do with the lockbox money, and what happened to it. Is, is there any further reports on that? And lost interest money at the bank where we received the lowest amount of interest on the pension money that was put in? And the stockholders renegotiated their contract so they could get a better deal? And here we sit, and don't even negotiate the first deal, because we were got it? And now the stockholders get more, get more money than we did? And, and we're not even taking the money out and renegotiating? Is there any advance on, on that question?
The lockbox question.
And the interest in the bank to the merger? The papers stated that the stockholders, which I thought we were one by putting in a few thousand dollars to get a better deal on our interest rate? And I, either take, we should take the money out, whatever, whatever it is, and renegotiate with another bank to get a better rate of interest? That was one of the questions I sent out, to think that somebody would work on it and find out, if everybody is, is in for negotiations, why can't we get a better deal?
I, I, I thought the lock, lockbox money, and the question was answered several times when I'm on it. Mr. Glaser, comment?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll do my best. The lockbox money remains on the balance sheet every month. In the two thousand and six loan fund, interest has been accrued every month. And regarding the interest that the pension money earns at National Penn Bank, that money is invested in government securities, and government agency securities, and a limited amount of very highly rated corporate securities. So it's not a matter of negotiating with National Penn for interest. It's a matter of what those instruments are paying. So once again, federal bonds, federal agency bonds, and some very highly rated corporate stuff. Thank you, Mr. President.
The question, the question still comes up on the interest on the money, and the compounded money on the lockbox, should have been able to pay off the ten million dollar loan that is due this, this, this year? And, and so is, is the money that was supposed to be there, there, without another bond issue to put it there so the taxpayers get another bond? Is, is, did it work out the way it was supposed to? Because the first couple of years, we got two hundred thousand dollars in interest, and then after that, everything failed, and the market goes up, and we still got the, 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 the piddlings of interest on, on that money? So the real question is, did it work the way it was told to the public? That the three and a half percent, three or three and a half percent or a quarter, I can't remember exactly what it was, that the five million interest on that would pay off the debt in ten years? Did that happen?
Mr. Glaser? The lockbox money is there, on five million dollars.
As far as I know, Mr. President, the, that instrument is performed as it was expected to perform, though it was done before my time.
Mr. Huxley, you want to add anything to that?
Oh.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Horn. No, no, we'll get, we'll get, we'll get what you need, Mr. Huxley. You want to say, okay, welcome back, Mr. Horn.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Chris Ford, yes, sir.
Hopefully, everybody here in the council knows who I am by now. I'm explaining to other people too.
Just say, just say your name.
My name is Jim O'Neal, of Warholham Street, Allentown, Pennsylvania. I've addressed the council two times already, to a very great situation here. Not only do we have issues about corruption in the city government, but we have issues of corruption and cover-up in our Allentown police force. And I'm gonna do something about it. If you people don't, I'm gonna go to a higher court and get something done. All right? I was assaulted by two people, two officers. One, Brian Ailes, okay? Who was, has been fired, okay? And some justice has been done. But there's also one accomplice that still is an acting police officer, Lee Henry, and he's still on the force. Okay, he perjured himself in testimony against me, okay? And he also perjured the affidavit, the original affidavit on me, which is a violation of forty-nine oh four. He perjured himself. Now, he committed a crime. And so has, okay, Robert Bush, I see him every day. That guy committed assault and battery on me, a felony. I told you people, okay? You are the guardians of the police force. We have a former captain here, of the APD, okay? He knows what, what goes on, all right? I have issued ten misconducts, major misconducts, that are issued now to our, our Lehigh County James Martin, okay? And so they're gonna be removed ultimately from the force. And includes one of the divisional commanders, Bill Reinen. I call them the Allentown Seven. They're corrupt as hell. Something has to be done about it. Something has to be done now, immediately. And I'm gonna make sure it happens. If not, I'm gonna go to a higher court, and I'll go, and go to the FBI, whatever I have to do. Each one of you are guardians of the police force. You're responsible for their actions. And I expect something done. If not, okay, there's gonna be severe repercussions. There's already litigation, okay, to the city of Allentown. And every time you ignore this, it's a thousand dollars a day. A thousand dollars a day. And the taxpayers are gonna have to pay that to me. You think you're gonna have budget problems? Oh, you're gonna have even more budget problems around here. Now it's time something's done about this. I'm losing my patience. I'm a good citizen. I want something done now. Remove them from the force immediately. Otherwise, I'll make sure they are, myself.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Huxley, Ryan, welcome.
Good evening, Ryan Hudson, this is your chapter leader. I know we beat it to death on Monday night about the solid waste contract.
We're done yet.
We're, we're, we're still a question to ask.
Round two coming up.
You know, I had some, you know, a little bit of thinking over the weekend, and since that Monday night meeting, and you know, I, I wanted to present maybe a remedy to the six hundred thousand savings that they proposed. What the remedy might be was maybe looking to city employees picking up the recycling curbside? The mixed paper keep hearing the same as it is? It's just that?
Okay, so you say?
So, so what I'm exactly saying is that city employees would pick up the recycled materials curbside, dump them at our facility, or transfer them right to the station that does the processing. So, in essence, we would just be bidding out the garbage collection only of the contract. You would pay strictly for garbage collection. So the co-mingle and recycled materials would be done in-house with city employees, with the control of recycling and solid waste. Hands-on control, hands-on collection, and essentially, the citizens get what they recycle. So, that's just something to look into. I don't have numbers in front of me to present tonight, I wish I did, kind of last minute, you know, thinking about this, not the time, and the contract's up. Maybe we could work on something together? And it has to do with, you know, some kind of agreement with SEIU on that issue? We'd be happy to look at it, okay?
Thank you, Ryan. Good suggestion, Mr. Sir. Mr. Kaminski, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. O'Call. I wish to begin my three minutes by reciting the legal definition of a contract. A contract is an agreement with specific terms between two or more persons or entities, in which there is a promise to do something in return for a valuable benefit known as consideration. Since the law is at the heart of most business dealings, it is one of the three or four most significant areas of legal concern, and can involve variations on circumstances and complexities. The existence of a contract requires finding the following factual elements: An offer, an acceptance of that offer which results in a meeting of the minds, a promise to perform, a valuable consideration, which could be a promise or a payment in some form, a time or event where performance must be made, terms and conditions for performance, including fulfilling promises, and then performance. The discussion of the budget items will center around contracts. Contracts that were supposedly negotiated, in good faith and in the best interest of all the people of our fine city. By letter of the law, it will appear on the surface that these contracts that will be discussed tonight in council will fit this legal definition, maybe, maybe not. However, I'm not concerned about that. When we elected our city officials from the mayor and city council members, we expected a type of contract from you. One where we expect promise to perform from all of you in exchange for valuable consideration, which is our tax dollars. And we deserve these tax dollars to be spent in a timely and cost-effective manner. Most important part, though, is fulfilling your promise. I saw a quote from one of the city council members saying that "the cost of tax collectors fee did not affect the city taxpayers, and only applied to those that had to pay a fee for back taxes." Some people do get in a bad financial situation. I have not been there, but I know people that have, you know, had to pay back taxes. Don't they deserve, as citizens of our city, the right to the lowest cost possible for the fees to repay those taxes? I therefore ask you to renew our faith in governing the city of Allentown. According to the city charter, from what I'm reading, and from the morning call, you have until December fifteenth to pass a budget. Look at as many ways as possible to save money for the citizens of Allentown without giving away our assets. Examine contracts that were perhaps not negotiated in good faith on behalf of the residents of this fine city, and see if they could be reopened, or if the party providing negotiated contracts will renegotiate in good faith with us. I ask you to table the budget tonight. On another, another note, as a teacher and AS dean, for the past four or five weeks, there have been gentlemen that had been burning materials behind one oh seven North Second Street during the school day.
One oh seven?
One oh seven North Second Street. The smoke, in my opinion, it's not wood, it, it, there's something toxic in there to the point where today, I was teaching, and I'm not gonna lie, I almost got to sit in front of my students. So I would ask that, if you could fire up, fire department and police reports, I believe, have been filed on this, on this person or persons, I don't know who it is. But I would ask you to please follow up on that.
Every day, Mr. Sir? Every day?
Probably about once or twice a week, over, since pride, say, in the beginning of October, roughly. And, and, and I'm gonna leave by the statements, I know I'm over my time, but please, let's get away from the activity that has led to the negative press and the negative comments about our city. And let's take strides towards making Allentown the all-American city, if you want to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaminski. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Lisa, I'm a tenant here to live at thirty-four North Franklin.
Let me, let me, his whole name?
Lisa Regardis.
Okay.
I live at thirty-four North Franklin Street. I moved there August of two thousand and thirteen. Shortly after moving in, we noticed some problems, and asked the landlord for repairs. We dealt with it all winter long, dealing with the landlord's handyman, who kept giving us the roundaround for eight months. We sat, um, sat on an open hole, because there was no subfloor in the first floor back room. In May of two thousand and fourteen, we had a sewer backup, which I called the code enforcement, it came out. We sent certified letters out to the landlord asking for the repairs. In June and August of, June, August, and August of two thousand and fourteen, we asked code to come out. It came out for the same thing, and nothing was done. October first of this year, we had inspector come out to do a full inspection, and again, none of things were done that were prepared from the prior year. Now, as we sit here today, they, two inspectors came out in November of two thousand and fifteen, and said that they were fine, and certified that everything was okay. And clearly, I have two rooms without heat. I have three kids. Two are autistic, I homeschool all day, so we are at home all day. Two rooms have no heat, and I have a bathroom that smells like sewage I can't use, the tub doesn't drain, and the toilet has been seeping since we have moved in. From our head, it's suggested to the landlord to replace it with a subfloor, which has not been done. Nine wax rings and one toilet later, within two years, that's what has happened. I just feel like code hasn't done their part in helping me as a tenant in fixing the problems that need to be fixed, or forcing the hand of my landlord to fix the problems.
Who's your landlord?
Ruby Emilio.
Ruby Emilio.
And I just, I don't know where to go from here. Right now, my house is packed, my son's birthday is on December fifteenth, and Christmas is coming, and I don't have Christmas tree up, because we're trying to find a house to move. And it seems like, that's my only option at this point, is to move. But it's hard, when you have three kids and a dog, to find a rental, it's very, 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 very tough. And all I can do is have faith, and that will come through, and wait for the report. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Lisa, we'll get on, we'll get on that right away. Mr. Doherty, we'll get on that right away, believe me. We've heard that before.
Where do I go from here?
Mr. Doherty, our manager director, will get code and go and standard for that.
I, I was shared with counsel to file from codes.
I even had the Allentown Tenant Association, they had filed a right to know, and even in that right to know, not everything was provided, that I have. I had documentation that they were here in my house, the house. For these things, we weren't fixed. So I don't know.
Yeah, we'll get on, Mr. Doherty, um, you have, you know, give Mr. Doherty whatever your name and address and phone number, we'll get on it.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, Mr. Sir. Yeah. Mr. Evan Trader, welcome.
Hey, Ken Evan Trader, seven thirty-three North Eleventh Street, Allentown, PA. And I do represent the Allentown Tenant Association. First, let me know what really is becoming a broken system here. The history of five-eleven West Liberty Street, which is repeated multiple times across the city. In two thousand and three, Javier Santiago bought this property. And at this point, we're not sure exactly when it was tagged, because the tag on the building is so faded. According to a neighbor, the building was tagged about four or five years ago. In February of two thousand and fourteen, PNC Bank took ownership of this property. But a month later, the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development took over the property, out of the owners. Now, I'll try and hit on it, but they're not very good at maintaining empty properties, name norm. This property was repeatedly broken into, the neighbors next door had repeatedly called police, until finally, basically, the place was in strict, completely stripped. During the time that HUD owned the home, at the one time that HUD owned the home, there was at least four break-ins, taking all the plumbing and wiring, and much more damage had occurred. Now, July two thousand and fifteen, PNC Bank retook control of this property. Now, talking to a couple of people about this property, you can buy it. Visually, it's a very beautiful place. Somehow, the outside has not deteriorated, the roof has not deteriorated, this place looks fantastic. I mean, it's, it's a shame. The owner had tried several times to buy this property, and are required about it, and each time, including HUD told her four times, it is not on the market, that they were going to rehabilitate it, which they did not, PNC Bank took it back over. Several people have said that this property now, a couple contractors who do rehabilitation in the city, have stated that it will cost at least sixty thousand dollars. And that is just to cover the plumbing, electrical roof windows, and the porches that are caving in. They stress that this does not include the carpets, drywall, major floor repairs, painting, or the heating system in the building which is missing. So in other words, this is an eighty thousand dollar problem. This is why that we have repeatedly talked about the issue of securing these properties quicker. This is going on over and over and over again across the city. We will, in two thousand and sixteen, make sure we get the proper signatures and put on one of these agendas, a program that we have found that, I'm bringing it up now, that maybe you guys can all start looking at it. You can find information on it, Harrisburg has instituted this program. And it's painted panels for blighted properties. Literally, within a week or till a property being tagged unfit for human habitation, it is figured out what the owner's gonna do. You get it, there is no owner sometimes. They're hard to get a hold of, but other times, there is. And, you know, an owner should know it's in a week, what can be done. If not, if they can't do nothing, then the entire bottom level gets palled up immediately. You guys had a program years ago with this reusable plexiglass, or like that. It exists on like three properties still. Especially reusable. Whatever happened to all of it, you know? It's gone, anyway, besides the point. The alternative gallery has, it's gonna be also, when we present this, it's also gonna talk about this program, because they have volunteered this space. And if panels get cut, that they will have them painted by artists in their gallery, and to put them on the buildings. There is a dozen communities in northeast that are doing this. There, as a matter of fact, there was, there's a video, I think on YouTube of it, and it shows you, you're driving by, and you look over at this house. It looks like a woman is like watering a plant in the house, the house has been dead for like eighteen years. But it has actually brought property values up. You have properties all over the place that are hideous. Today alone, we called in three uns secure properties. Not to mention, I'm getting really a little bit annoyed. Sweep and code has come out, and they have gotten on top of all of these properties, for the most part, with the exception of three twenty-three North Ninth Street, which remains an absolute pigsty, which is owned by a company run by Mr. Bernhardt, of the former PPL guy. He owns, he is the head of the homeowners association of Allentown, or something like that. They own that property. We have reported this here to you, twice, and four times down there. Nothing's been done about it yet. Was it because of him? Seriously, I mean, why is this particular property slipping through? It's not the only one. It is not the only one. Also, something needs to be done with the illegal dumping. Uh, Mr., I'm not sure what his name was, the teacher, Miss? What he mentioned, we actually noticed today also. But we're asking you, beyond checking in on what he's talking about, is Spruce Street, Pine Street, Bryant Street, over in that area, you need to send inspectors through those roads. those roads. The amount of garbage and cars piled up, the amount of buildings, garages collapsing in the back alleys, it's pathetic. It's, I mean, these are low rental areas, but you know what? I just don't imagine why they have to walk out of their house and look at all this crap and garbage day in and day out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. I start, um, uh, thank you, getting me, Ty Scott from Penrose, I'm here tonight.
First of all, anyway, I'm here regarding A. Scott Enterprise and the City of Allentown contract regarding New England Avenue. I appreciate the response from the Right to Know Act being received and the money, the amount of money the litigator and consultant fee that the city spent was disclosed to me. And I appreciate that. But I do question whether or when the city has plans to pay the claim that is due in owing that was admitted about a month ago when I was here the last time. You acknowledged it, and I don't know how this is coming along with the budget, since the gentleman is here tonight, but I just like to know if the responses that I can expect from the city and for payment regarding my claim. And I don't know if you have anyone here that can speak tonight, or if you wanna wait till the next meeting and I'll come back.
Well, you, you, the litigation has been officially completed, you did receive a letter, there's still, there's still going, the litigation's still ongoing for the attorney fees.
Yes, that's, that's.
That's a separate entity, understand?
Yeah, I'm not asking, that's being decided by the Supreme Court, and I'm not asking that you just render that decision.
You're talking about.
The Supreme Court will take care of that one.
Talking about your payment.
I'm talking about the claim that was for nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars that was due in owing and it was admitted here a month ago. And I'm still, I'd like to know when I'm gonna get paid.
Any response from solicitor's office?
I have no response personally, but while the city's solicitor is here presently, if she doesn't have any answer, then I'm not gonna have any answer either.
Good evening, Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Susan Wild, city solicitor. Judge Baricchio recently stayed the entire proceeding while the appellate part is of the Supreme Court. And we are very much aware of it, the city has acknowledged the award, there is still a piece of the case that is in litigation, but steps are being taken to make sure that the amount that is rightfully due to you is a, and I understand that you've been waiting a long time, but unfortunately, the judicial system works slower than we like.
Yeah, and I don't know, and honestly, I don't know how that was stayed, but that's another question that you, no one here will have the answer to, but that's unbelievable. But what's going on with what is, the city is going through right now, this is a small part of everything that's going on here, and I'm sorry that I'm part of it, but thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Scott. Anyone else question the floor? See, now, Mr. Shook, you coming up?
Yes, I am.
Welcome, Mr. Shook.
Good evening, Ken. Uh, my name is Blue Shook of the thirty-second Street. Uh, probably I'm going to remember everything that I think Angela was saying, a little scattered, a little bit more, but, um, I'm sure you're well aware of what's been happening here recently with, uh, the mayor being accused of various improprieties and such. And I'm thinking back to some of the contracts that have been negotiated, some of the things that have happened. One thing stands out though is that parking deal, I can't get that one out of my mind. The parking deal where the rates were raised recently, a couple of months ago, if I recall correctly, um, there was only one business person who actually voted, who actually was in favor of that. Several people had spoken out at that time against raising the parking rates, and yet the parking rates were increased. I also heard various regrets, mostly in the news, about various people, council people here regretting some of the things that have been happening. Now, you have the chance to do something about it. Ms. Ikenwald started to say you'll be leaving us soon, but you'll still have the chance tonight perhaps to reverse that parking rate or choose other actions that will help you reestablish, um, illegitimacy, so to speak, to this government. I would hope that you do that and we'll be watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shook. Anyone else question the floor? Mr. Friday?
Here you go.
Mr. Teddy?
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
No, 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 no.
Go ahead.
No, no. No, no. Come on.
Okay.
You're the before age.
You all right?
As soon as I said that, I thought, man, I'm sorry, Mrs. Fegley.
Next time, I should've put it on paper. Well, not paper on this maybe.
Oh, how on, I, oh, gosh, where'd you, where did you, I'm sorry, I wanted, um, to read something. So obviously, the elephant in the room is the issues pertaining to the mayor, and I know it's been stated here before that, um, we're kind of hoping that the FBI will speed things up and that, um, the issues will take care of themselves. And it doesn't seem to be that the FBI is in a hurry, and I'm just wondering once again about the Ethics Committee and where their responsibilities are to our community. In reading the, it's Article one seventy-one regarding the Declaration of Policy, it says, "The operation of democratic government requires that public officials and employees be independent, impartial, and responsible to the people. The government decisions and policy be made in the proper channels of government structure and the public office not be used for personal gain, and that the public have confidence in the integrity of its government. In recognition of these goals, there is hereby established a code of ethics for all officials and employees, whether elected or appointed, paid or unpaid, and a Board of Ethics to administer the code and further its objectives." The purpose of this code is to establish ethical standards of conduct for all such employees and officials and employees of the city, its agencies and authorities, whether elected or appointed, by setting forth those acts or actions which are incompatible with the best interests of the city and by directing disclosure by officials and employees of private financial or other interested matters affecting the city. I, I think the issues that have been presenting themselves in the news fall within the category of the Board of Ethics, and I would like to request that the Ethics Committee at this point start talking about, start meeting and discussing what has been happening and the actions of the mayor and how they pertain to this code of ethics. I mean, I think the code of ethics very clearly states that these type of issues that are being shown to be unfair, not partial, and also not in the best interest of our community, calls, it just calls for action, and I'm asking you to please tell me what it's going to take to get the Board of Ethics to start meeting to consider.
I, I'm sorry, I, I'd like to clarify a question on that from our solicitor, and we do have, we do have a code of ethics, we have an ethics ordinance, okay? And is my understanding correct, Mr. Palacho, that a complaint or something has to be filed, a complaint has to be filed with the Board of Ethics, and then the Board of Ethics goes into, basically, you know, they hear the complaint from the complated, and then, just help me out here, but, because I've been on city council six years, I think we've had two, that I recall, two, I believe. Mr. Hammond, you have a better history than I do, we've had two that went into the Board of Ethics, but Ms. Fegley's right, but pursue that for me.
Sir, we're actually the staff of the Board of Ethics, so I could speak to you about what you would need to do.
Mr. Hammond, speak into the mic so we get that.
The, we're actually the staff of the Board of Ethics, and I would speak to you tomorrow about what you would continue to file or to request for advisory opinion.
Okay, I mean, I know when I was here last time, we did discuss how I could do that and, um, you know, but I was also under the impression that city council itself, like with, with a certain number of being in agreement, could also request, you know, an advisory opinion.
Mr. Palacho, want to follow up with Mr. Hammond's center, with the protocol, procedure?
Ms. Ikenwald has a good point on that.
No, that's okay, I'll wait until.
Specifically, it, it, it's very shallow as far as what requirements are, as long as your self complaint has followed with that, this committee, that this committee can move on, but there has to be some actions that can be done.
And then we pursue the investigation of the complaint.
Correct.
Go ahead, Ms. Ikenwald.
Uh, Mrs. Fegley, as always, I agree with you. But I'd just like to put into play that there is another way to do this that I feel is stronger. All right, in the city charter, two-ten, we do, the city council has a right to call together a commission, a committee, when we are in a situation such as we find itself. The reason I feel that that's a stronger way to go about it is, that committee has subpoena powers, so it could ask or request and by law be responded to through subpoena. The Ethics Committee, the members of the Ethics Committee are in part, and maybe even in totality, chosen by the mayor. So it puts us in an interesting bind, whereas the other way to go, if the city council would agree, we could form a commission in which we could study this. This is not the first time I brought this up in public, there just wasn't, I didn't sense that there was a will at the time for my colleagues to proceed in that fashion. But I would hope that perhaps now there would be greater interest to do that, and it would have nothing to do with interfering with the FBI investigation, because our investigation would really have to do with contracts and the way in which the city then is the injured party in which contracts are done that are against the law. So just to repeat, two-ten of our own city council charter gives us the right to call that commission.
And can I follow up on that? And Ms. Ikenwald, you're absolutely right, we did talk, and if you recall, we were on executive session a few months ago, and we did talk about that, and at that time, you know, we discussed that and possibly it needs to, to go, go further, so.
Yeah, I just.
You had that about two months ago. Go ahead.
I mean, I just have two indictments, I'm like, how many do we need, three? Or, I mean, it's just, I mean, it's not saying you're asking who to resign, it's not, it's just that you're actually looking into it further before it becomes worse and, you know, the public's perception of the city council becomes worse in some points. I do, we'll be up for reelection, and people are gonna ask why you weren't protecting us.
I mean, I just, I don't want to in any way imply that I would be discouraging of taking this to the Ethics Committee, I'm just saying that there is a stronger legal avenue in which to do this.
Somebody, please, do something.
The clue being subpoena. So if there were a second, I mean, you know, I've tried to bring that forward, that I would need a, a second to be able to begin that process.
Well, I think there's something we need to talk to our solicitor about in the executive session, I'd be more than willing to call him in the executive session and bear in your future, with him as well, okay?
Thank you.
Bear in your future. Thank you, Mr. Fegley. Mr. Friday, you.
Robert Trotner, nineteen twenty White House Street, Allentown, for the Community Action Form Two, and I just need about ten seconds. I had heard that Mr. Palowski would be here tonight to defend the budget, has that changed? I see Mr. Doherty in his place, has that changed? Will Mr., will Ms. Palowski in fact be here tonight?
That I cannot answer. I had heard also that it was a possibility that Mr. Posky would be here to talk about the budget, but he rises as good as my eyes, I do not see him in the room.
Can, can Mr. Doherty or someone else can confirm one way or the other?
I, I don't, I don't know if you want to, Mr. Doherty, I mean.
Um, in lieu of city council removing the core elements of the budget bills tonight, the mayor decided not to come until the fourteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Friday. Mr. Poco, how are you, sir, welcome.
Good, how are you?
I thought you held your shoulder, you okay?
I'm good, yeah, plus a little cramp.
Yeah, I'm gonna take them off.
Yeah, thanks. Um, lots of mess, stuff going on in the news. If you've been active in the city for any period of time, especially in the last four, five, six years, you know that if you disagree with Ed Palowski, especially in public, he really gets under his skin. I mean, the guy hates it. And it strikes me that you, as a body, are the only really check and or balance to what our current mayor, or any mayor, wants to do in the city with our city resources and so on. And I think that bugs him even more. Like, it's one thing for citizens to complain about the mayor and question things, because we're all uninformed and, and we're, what's the word, naysayers, people call us, but for you to question him, I mean, that's really gotta be a thorn in his side, and I think, I think that's one of the things that's evidenced by his lack of presence here tonight. I think it's one of the things that's evidenced by the audacity of him preparing a budget knowing that according to U.S. federal court documents, he's been lying about contracts, lying about investigations, lying about material facts for these contracts ever, for two or three years, and as recently as October, according to the final reporting done by the Morning Call, which was not pulled out of thin air but taken from federal U.S. court documents. And so the fact that you have this power to do what Ms. Ikenwald suggested, inform a commission and subpoena documents and things like that, that's exactly what Ed doesn't want you to do. And the contempt that he holds you in is even worse than the contempt he has for my good friend Rich Fegley. I, I just, he, I mean, you have the power to do something, and you have to do something. You have to do something. So I, I hope that somebody goes along with Ms. Ikenwald and for the sake of the citizens of Allentown, we look at this with the power and authority you have as per our charter and as per your charter. I mean, everything that's coming out is true, and again, I can't imagine Mr. Wilds or other people perjuring themselves and falling on a sword in this scenario if there's not something there, okay? If all of this is true, then Ed Palowski has denied all of us the right to honestly negotiate services and then had the gall to present a budget that's fraudulent, that includes a tax raise. That is the definition of audacious. It's egregious, it's ridiculous, and I'm really kind of bummed out that Mr. Palowski's not here, because I asked him on Facebook to come. I looked at his Facebook page where he's talking about how eleven years in a row with no property tax raise, and we ended the per capita tax, and he's very proud of all that, so I just commented on one of his posts, and I said, hey, will you be there tonight to answer some questions, because I'm sure there's plenty of them? And lo and behold, an hour later, my request was deleted from his Facebook page.
Imagine that.
I don't see him. My eyes are maybe as good as yours, and I, Emily, do you see him? I, I don't see him anywhere. So, I don't, maybe he didn't check Facebook, but you have the power, for the love of God and for the love of the city, please do it. Also, let's get some lights on the soldiers and sailors monument, it looks pathetic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poco. Mr. Hudson or?
What's your fifty-four? No. Go ahead, Hudson, yourself. I'll calm it down a little bit. I, I'm just trying to get the, some revenue numbers on the parking authority. Uh, I think in two thousand fourteen, they said they were gonna give us four hundred thousand, and then what, this past year in fifteen, maybe a million? And I want to know if that's correct or what they gave us, and what's in the budget for sixteen? I, I could answer that.
No, they gave us one point, one point two-five.
And what is in the budget for, for the two thousand fifteen numbers? And I had the last conversation I had had with the Department of Parking Authority indicated that they expected that that full one point two-five million would be forthcoming by the end of calendar year.
There'll be one one payment, because I don't think they, did they pay any during the year so far of that one point?
They had paid a portion there, and there is one million dollars anticipated for revenue from the Parking Authority in the two thousand sixteen budget.
Okay, thank you. I would request that, what I call the made-off report, the monthly one, that we put a line item in there, twenty-nine oh four, or one of those things, and put in the Parking Authority that we can see the revenue that comes in and when does it come in from the Parking Authority. I mean, I request that from the Finance Committee, that possibly we put that in. And that in addition also, I think the amount of taxes that should be due from the mid-zone area, because that's a big factor. Uh, I heard a number of four hundred fifty thousand, that number seems very, very low, but I think with the computers we have today, I think we ought to be able to calculate what that is. So I also requested a line item we put in there on every monthly report, so we can see how those taxes and revenues come in. Mr. Blazer, heard that? Take that on the road.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Parking Authority already has a revenue line item on the monthly report.
What page is that on?
I don't have one in front of me, sir, but it'll be probably in the second page of the revenues.
Is this a Parking Authority, is that right?
It says Parking Authority.
Honestly, I'd have to apologize. Oh, I must, I have to apologize if I, if I over missed, if I missed that, but, okay. And, uh, what about our other requests? Do you think that's possible until?
Think we could look at the, the news, the taxes coming from the news?
Right.
See what now, we have those numbers.
We got the figures tonight. We got the figures tonight.
If we're having a billion dollars' worth of property down there, we should be able to see that, what they're really paying and when they're gonna be paying it.
Well, yeah, we have that.
Can we see that on a monthly basis?
I think so. I think, I think I hear them talking there, that we have that. Mm-hmm. Look at that. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Mr. Pearson? Welcome, Mr. Pearson.
That appears to nine forty-two East Tunes, I've been very brief. All I want to say today is that the city, without limits, has certainly got itself into a mess. And those who are given the authority to rule over the city without limits thought they had, thought they could govern in such a way that they themselves would have no limits to their power. But they're finding themselves wrong. They do have limits, and they are going to pay the price.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you.
Mr. Rinder, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President. How are you, sir?
Fine, thank you.
Uh, in lieu of what's going on here in this city, and the allegations against Mr. Pulaski, I would ask that Councilmember number two, number three, number four, and number seven resign immediately. Because all you have done is rubber stamp everything that Mayor Pulaski has proposed. And we all know that, and you know that, okay? And I ask that Councilmember number seven return his fifteen thousand dollars from Mayor Pulaski, which was in all probability tainted money. And the same for Councilmember number four.
Councilmember?
Is there any response?
Mr. Rinder is supposed to address the President of City Council.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I'm sorry.
We, 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 we-
And Council President O'Connell, I'm asking you as a friend and a business owner, we need leadership on this council. We need leadership. Okay, Mrs. Eichenwald has done everything possible. We need her support. We need you to support her. We need help here in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rinder. Anyone else ready for the floor? Anyone else ready for the floor? Seeing none, we'll move on with our, our agenda. Approval, approval of minutes, there, there are no minutes to approve? Whole business. I have a comment, uh, that I'd like to state at this time. Um, in conjunction with my colleagues, a proposal has been made to postpone voting on Bill sixty-nine and seventy until December ninth, at which time we conduct a special meeting to vote on the solid waste contract and these bills. Bill sixty-nine being the solid waste fund, Bill seventy being the solid waste fee. Obviously, uh, I believe it was Monday night, we had, uh, talked about the trash hauler contract, or the trash hauler RFP, the federal proposal, and we did not come to a decision. So obviously, Bill sixty-nine and seventy would have to be postponed until December. Well, sorry, microphone, December ninth. And also, um, Bill eighty-one, we also decided to postpone Bill eighty-one, the general fund, Bill eighty-two, the EIT fund, and Bill eighty-three, the two thousand six tax rate. We, uh, decided to, um, postpone those to give council further time. Uh, it has been stated that we want to go through the budget and scrutinize some of the possible vendors, uh, and entities that have been discussed in previous, uh, meetings. So we will, we'll, we'll have that meeting for Bill eighty-one, eighty-two, and eighty-three on Monday, December fourteenth, at five-thirty. Thank you. Under communications, Mr. Hammond, we have no communications? Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Eichenwald.
I, I don't know which other category to fit this, but, um, I'd just like to take a moment to publicly thank our press, especially Emily and Randy, who sit there meeting after meeting, who informed me as a citizen and as a city council member of so much about what was going on. So on the one hand, I'm so grateful, Emily. I'm very grateful to you for all that you've done to inform the public. At the other time, on the other side, I really think that so many issues that Emily has presented through the Morning Call should have been told us by the administration. What am I referring to? The extra thirty-seven thousand dollars that was paid to former finance director, um, public official number four. Um, the eight thousand dollars that was spent on sweeping the offices, or whatever the correct terminology is. The money that was spent on burner phones. I would not have known any of this if our press hadn't reported. And I think as a city council member, I should have been told that by some branch of our administration. In addition to that, we have the Rosen issue that contributed thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars as a family to the mayor's various campaigns. And lo and behold, it was decided after all that effort, and it does cost us money, because it's the time and effort of our employees. After all that, it was decided we really didn't need a security study after all, and that went by the wayside. Or the other thing was the streetlights. That upsets me the most. A three million dollar contract, we thought about getting bonds, and suddenly, lo and behold, after all the contributions are made to the various mayoral campaigns for senator and governor, we find out that we could do that in-house. So on the one hand, I'm grateful that we live in a country that provides us with a free press, that can do investigations, that we can find this out. On the other hand, as we move forward with these budgets approvals, it's beyond dismaying and distressing to me that our own city officials don't inform us about all the time and effort that is spent on contracts, and then in the end, those contracts don't materialize for all kinds of reasons. So it is obviously my hope that going forward, and time is short, um, as Mr. O'Connell so correctly stated, this is probably the worst time for us to be in this situation, considering that the budget. So in the very short time that we have left, I hope that the administration will do everything in their power to answer the questions. And my final comment, in lieu of communications, is I just wanna publicly state that I can't even say disappointed, I just have to say I'm chagrined that the mayor isn't here during these budget proceedings. I think you would have to go far and wide in municipal offices, in county offices, in state offices, to find that the chief executive officer, who has proposed this particular budget, has attended only the first meeting at a PowerPoint presentation, and is not here to answer the concerns of the citizens. Can't we?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Eichenwald. Uh, reports from committees? Uh, Mr. Glazer, budget and finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the committee's not met since the last council meeting, and the next meeting is scheduled for, um, December sixteenth, at five-thirty PM, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public safety, Ms. Eichenwald?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The committee has not met since the last council meeting, and the next meeting is not yet to be scheduled. But I would suggest that perhaps at some point, we put on our schedule a discussion. Mr. Ox has been here on several occasions, and we haven't really had a public discussion as much as we can. I know that there is litigation involved, but perhaps we can meet with Chief Morris at some point and be given some information about the proceedings.
All right, you. Community economic development, and, uh, Mr. Trotter?
Thank you, Mr. President. The meeting has not met since the last council meeting, and there's no meeting scheduled.
Thank you, sir. Parks and Recreation, Ms. Moda?
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee has not met since the last council meeting. Um, the next meeting is not yet scheduled.
Thank you, Ms. Moda, public works, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, sir. Please, not met since the last council meeting, there's no future meeting scheduled.
Thank you, sir. Human Resources Administration appointments, Mr. Hendrix?
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee has not met since last meeting, and there's currently no meeting scheduled for the future.
Thank you, sir. Rules, Chambers, and Developmental Relations Strategies, that's my committee. The committee has not met since last council meeting. A future meeting has not yet been scheduled. Other committee reports, city council members, or one of the committees, do you have any? Mr. Davis, go ahead.
Yes, in November twenty-fourth, the Board of Compliance Office made a presentation to review the committee about their semi annual report. I was happy to, pleased to report that, uh, it was as the same as the first one. All the official mandates have been met, all the complaints have been resolved, and it's in general very good report. LCA also made a report on the new water rates. They will be increasing four eighty-five a quarter, two point five percent. Total nineteen dollars, approximately nineteen dollars a year.
Four dollars and eight cents.
Yeah.
Finish, Mr. Davis? Uh, any other, any other colleagues or other committees? Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, uh, the parking authority committee did not meet in November, however, there is a meeting scheduled, uh, in, uh, the sixteen, for the sixteenth of December, and it will be the annual meeting.
Thank you, sir. Any other colleagues on, serving the committees? Seeing none. City Council report, Ms. Kobel is ill, she's excused for tonight's meeting. Management and Directors report, Mr. Dockerty?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, first, the tree lighting ceremony, um, is scheduled for tomorrow night from, uh, starting at four, four o'clock and, uh, to seven o'clock at PPL Plaza, Pocket Park, hosted by the Hamilton District Main Street Program and the Great Lee High Valley Chamber of Commerce. Uh, number two, while on the holiday, uh, one gentleman mentioned about the lack of lighting on the monument. Um, it's a electrical, uh, problem that the county has, uh, getting power to that, so we could, uh, light up the monument. We're working with the county diligence, we've tried to get some lighting up there. It looks fantastic during the day, and terrible at night.
Uh, finally, Mr. President, um, reports that we received from the opening of our warming station, uh, last evening. Um, there were a total of thirteen persons who spent the night, all had left by seven fifteen, uh, this morning. We spoke with the two attendants from the Conference of Churches, and there were no issues with the facility, and they continue to work out, uh, the punch list items on that, on that facility.
Hmm, thank you, Mr. Dockerty.
Please, my report.
Okay. Appointments, no appointments for this evening? Ordinances for final passage. Mr. Hammond, Bill sixty-six?
Uh, Bill sixty-six, a man's business regulation and taxation, Title IX fees, parking recreation fees, by adding a new fee schedule for, uh, special events.
Okay, who's gonna handle that one? Christie's coming up?
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Alfred, how are you?
Good, how are you? Um, so this is a bill that was proposed to cover the city's costs in, from special events that are held, um, by entities, especially nonprofits. We have a large volume of nonprofits based in Allentown, um, and for-profit entities that come into the city as well. Um, there was a request by city council when we last talked about this bill to look into, um, a security deposit, to look into differentiating between fees for for-profit and nonprofit. Um, and we did submit that request to the solicitor's office. I believe that the, um, response was forwarded, Mr. Hammond, to the city council members. Um, so my understanding is that it is not considered, um, legal to charge, um, a, a different rate for for-profit versus nonprofit, and to charge, um, a, a security deposit is considered a tax or an unreasonable rate. Um, so the goal of this bill was simply to cover the city's costs for the, the events that come in. If there's any damage that they do, that we could recuperate the cost afterwards. And it seems that the response legally is that that's, um, kind of what, what the bill is intended to do and what it can do. I'll be answering questions.
We have questions from my colleagues, comments? No comments, colleagues?
Yes, sir.
Promises, Danz?
A question was raised about block party fees. Is that, my understanding, that it's still seventy-five dollars? Or is it all or ten?
Um, so it was previously ten dollars, and this would propose the seventy-five dollar change. Uh, that is to cover the costs, um, that it takes for the different residences to verify the residency of the people that have requested the block party, um, and some of the behind-the-scenes work that needs to be done by the police department.
Mr. Glazer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, uh, Mr. Davis had the same question. And, um, what I'd like to do is propose an amendment this evening to, uh, reduce that rate to twenty-five dollars for, uh, block party fees. I recognize that there is a significant amount of work that the administration and the departments put in, uh, to, to these permits, but I also recognize that, um, you know, many of our neighborhood groups don't have a whole lot of resources, and, uh, I'm hoping that this, um, this new fee will, um, satisfy everybody a little bit more. Thank you, and I certainly appreciate a second. Uh, second?
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, all those are, all, all those are favorable, right? They're not?
Public discussion.
Well, uh, uh, let's, this is, with the amendment first, okay? Amendment, you added that seventy-five dollars, it was ten, seventy-five, he's taking the amendment to bring it to twenty-five, twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Can we lower it? No, twenty-five. Um, and-
And just to be clear, that's, uh, section four hundred point oh eight, and it's the sixth line of the legislation.
And there is a, there is a lot of, I, I heard there's a lot of legwork from the police for verifying the addresses of people and talking to people for legitimacy of the block party. Okay?
Comments from the public?
Comments from the public about the fee? Mr. Deputy Trager, I remember you wrote for last time, put that in, write it up.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Davis, since you Glazer bring it up and actually, you know, proposing that. Yeah, twenty-five is reasonable. I, honestly, ten to seventy-five? I, I don't understand, and they still didn't even think about lowering it. I don't understand that law process, though, that the department, them themselves, think about, maybe we should just try to go with fifty dollars. But thank you very much, Mr. Glazer, Mr. Davis.
Ms. Girlard, lovely.
Uh, Assistant Ms. Girlard, nine fifty-six West Warner Street, Allentown, Pennsylvania. Um, so, I may have missed this. The reason for any, any increase, I appreciate the twenty-five, obviously, for the block parties, is what? Because the cops have to look up the addresses and verify?
That's part, it's not all of it, the whole portion of it. His office, uh, you know, it's not that-
I think I missed, wait.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a part of it, that's not the whole package, that's only part of the package. I mean, how are you, you, you finish up on that?
Um, here's two barricades that are delivered for a block party to make sure that the street can be blocked off safely. Um, there's also, it's just the industry then making sure that they work and file properly, put out to everyone in the city, and turn on to the calendar so everyone's aware of what's going on, and make sure that, uh, that the insurance is verified for the event. Just kind of covers the industry's back and hope for that.
That's cool to hear that they dropped the barricades off. Usually I end up picking them up myself, I'm gonna have to pay, I'm paying for these. Thank you for telling me that.
You get a rebate.
Yeah. All right, um, all right, well, but, um, I really haven't, this is the first I've heard this, so, um, at least twenty-five is better than seven, whoa, seventy-five, so thank you.
Anyone else? Starting the, um, ready fee? Ms. Waters, later?
Welcome, City Council. My name is Ken Loggins, here, seven twenty-one West Cumberland Street in Allentown. The concern I have is that we are doing more and more of these special events all the time. And you're, and the people responsible for, who are people working most of these events is an organization that I recently retired from, the Allentown Fire Police. And they do not get compensated, uh, by all these, especially the for-profit events, as, as they should. I mean, I know that these, uh, groups are bringing in these events, and they're promising, uh, donations, but when you're working, when you're asking the same group of people to give up basically every weekend of the summer of their lives to help provide security and traffic for these events, something needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alfred, most later. Any other comments on the amendment? Seeing none, Mr. Hammond called, a vote on this, the only amendment, Mr. Glazer, and a second by Mr. Reed. Mr. Hammond called, a vote on the amendment.
The only amendment, you change seventy-five dollar fee to twenty-five. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Eichenwald?
Yes.
Mr. Glazer?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrix?
Yes.
Ms. Moda?
Yes.
And Mr. Koppa?
Yes. With no vote on the entire bill? Any comments from the colleagues on the entire bill? Any comments from the public on the entire bill?
Mr. President, I did have one comment as far as clarifying this board's testimony. As far as security deposits, just wanted to clarify that it's also considered a fee, okay? Not necessarily a tax unless it's unreasonably, uh, or unreasonable, or if it's too high, okay? So if it's reasonable commensurate with the services that are actually being performed, then a security deposit is okay.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to make sure that I was- I just wanted to make sure that I was clear before everybody. This is from the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Glazer. Ms. Deppert, trigger about the entire bill?
Yeah, just a couple things quick. The part here where it's fascinating objects or a tree shrub, twenty-five dollar on occurrence.
Again, Mr. Sp-
The fascinating of an object on a tree, shrub, or any natural amenity that says twenty-five dollars occurrence. So precisely what does that mean? In other words, like, these people that, we buy houses for, you know, does, we're talking about?
This is related to events, so if someone's holding an event and they are fascinating signage for their events, so trees and shrubs within the area of their event or around their event.
Okay, so then that means also, well, elections and events and the failure to make signage, is that also, or is that just for a block party? It doesn't mean signs that are placed on city property all over the place, I, Mr. Director, but, but I'm asking what that is about? It's a, it's a season thing, then?
The bill is proposed towards special events. I do not know of any elections that sign up and complete the special event permitting process and go through that, so it would be for any signage that was related to an event that went through the permitting process.
Thank you, Ms. Deppert. Anyone else? Bill sixty-six, all the comments? Seeing none, Mr. Hammond called, a vote, Bill sixty-six.
Okay, the vote on the bill has amended. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ikenwal?
Yes.
Mr. Glazer?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Moda?
Yes.
And Mr. Cohn?
Yes. Mr. Hammond, Bill fifty-eight?
Bill sixty-eight is in ordinance of the Council of City of Allentown authorizing a loan from the unappropriated balance of the solid waste fund, the amount of four million, five hundred thousand dollars to the city's general fund.
Comments from the colleagues? Mr. Glazer, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. All kinds of governments take money from their fund balance. This is the first time I've ever seen a body take money and by legislation agree to pay it back. So, no. I think it's a very transparent way to do this, and I would support the legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Glazer. Any other comments from my colleagues? Ms. Ikenwal?
I reluctantly am going to vote no for this. In theory, I have no objection to borrowing money and then, of course, paying it back. But the reason that this four and a half million dollars needs to be, needs to be borrowed from the solid waste fund has to do with the expenditures of the budget. And since I am in distress about some of the elements in the budget, especially that that has to deal with contracts, I'm going to vote no for this, because I don't want future generations to have to be burdened by additional money being borrowed to help pay for this year's budget, which is largely based on issues that do not follow the legality that is demanded of them. So, Mr. Kaminski, I agree with you, and in the same way that I will vote against tax increase, I will vote against borrowing more money, even though it's borrowing from one pocket and putting it into another, and even though with the expectation, what's going to happen now that we no longer have the income from the water fund, LCA has that income, this is going to be a perpetual problem. So next year we'll have to borrow more money, and more money, and more money. So in that vein, I'm going to vote against this.
Thank you, Ms. Ikenwal. Any comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public, Mr. Ashman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wish Council would put this back into committee, number one, because meeting between now and when your next meeting is, Council can come up with cuts in the budget. I haven't heard anyone talk about cutting in the budget, making cuts. Under seven, City Council Julio and Francis Exxus, his manager, I came up before a bunch of representatives, after representatives of the City Council, I made cuts on every fund, and presented to City Council and to the mayor, and that then challenged me on the cuts. I haven't heard anyone yet make a recommendation where we're going to cut in the budget, and that's what we have to do, and we can't borrow, 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 the balance of funds. Is it two thousand and fifteen, we're going to bounce two sixteen budget, two thousand and sixteen, are we going to bounce the two hundred and seventeen budget by borrowing, borrowing, borrowing? We can't do that. We have to look where we can cut. We want to take this money to balance the budget. I mean, this could be the first, and it could be the second, it could be the third, we have to stop. If you don't start making cuts, you're going to have to do this every year. So why not we just put this back in committee and see where we can come up with cuts? You know, if you look at the, at the, 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 the city of Allentown, if you take the water sewer debt, this debt, and in two thousand and fifteen, which wasn't added to the, 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 you know, we're, we're, we're in hot here, that we as homeowners, you as homeowners, Mr. President, for one point five billion dollars, that school district, the county, LCA, and the city of Allentown, where are we going to get this money? We're talking about getting out of the hole. We're going in the hole. So I have City Council consider putting this back in committee and start making cuts so we don't have to borrow four and a half million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ashman. Mr. Kaminski?
A couple weeks ago, I spoke and said champions fix what's wrong, and I'd like to thank Ms. Ikenwal for being a champion and making an attempt to fix what's wrong here. If we are intellectually honest in this room right now, we will table every last thing that comes up here and use every last minute up until eleven fifty-nine on December fourteenth and make sure that that four and a half million dollars hopefully gets cut down to zero. But if it can't get cut down to zero, it gets cut down to the bare minimum necessary to balance this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaminski. Ms. Deppert, trigger?
I might have missed the one part, what are we going to, how are we paying this four and a half million back? What was that kind of fund that it backed up?
Ms. Hartzell?
I might have missed the-
Mr. Deppert, the bill will repay the four and a half million dollars in equal installments over seven years, ending in two thousand and twenty-three, it comes out. Bill indicates we will pay back at about six hundred and forty thousand a year, each year, two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-three, back from the general fund to the solid waste.
Okay, so how much over the four and a half million we're borrowing are we actually paying back?
Oh, we're paying the whole thing back. It's four and a half million.
No interest on it as well?
No interest on it as well. No interest, just a straight payback, four and a half million.
And what do we need specifically for that million dollars? Why do we do it?
I had mentioned briefly in earlier discussions about this, that due to our overall situation and benefit costs, pension increases, et cetera, the overall cost of personnel in the city over the last four years has increased thirteen and a half million dollars. And to deal with the costs that are assigned with all of the people who work here in the city of Allentown, police, fire, all of the other folks who work here and try to make this a great city, we are at a point where we have to raise additional revenue to make sure that those costs and all of the pension costs are covered sufficiently.
Okay, so this is just for pensions? I thought that's what the whole police was, to take care of this mess. And now a year later, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Hi, Ms. Hartzell, welcome.
I'm Helen Hong, twenty sixteen, East Highland Street, Allentown. Do you know what, I'm really confused. I'm glad you people know what you're talking about. Two years ago, wasn't it twenty thirteen when we leased the water out at three hundred and what, three, three hundred and thirty million that we needed to pay back? Wasn't it three hundred and thirty million?
No, what, what, what we received, two, two, two eleven.
You received three hundred and thirty?
Two eleven.
Two hundred and eleven, no? And you needed a certain amount to go into this bank that's in Allentown and save it to pay off police pension?
Yeah, my mom's.
And you had enough?
To lower it.
You had enough. You, I mean, you did get enough money to put it there that you will pay it back.
One hundred and fifty-six million.
And in the meantime, there was more than what you needed, is that correct? But the more that you, than what you needed, well, where did that all go? Now you don't have to tell me right away. Another question, Mr. Tia. All that money went somewhere, and I just distinctly remember being at a middle layer community association meeting, and it was before an election, and I'm pretty sure it was, I think it was the general election. And as we sat there, this small group, we were told there's going to be a lot of money. This lot of money is going to pay for everything that was going on. The money was going into the police pension, and they were going to do these things, and we're going to do nice things, there were going to be a lot of nice things getting done in Allentown. And here we are, two years later, and you have enough money to do anything. Where did it all go? You paid a lot of consultants. How did that happen? How did we pay millions to PFM and anybody else that walked down the street that was going to tell us what to do, how to get paid? Now there's no money, and you're doing, you're starting all over again. Thank you, Ms. Ikenwal, you tried to save us forever and ever. You've got to get this under control, and I don't know where you're going to begin, by borrowing more money? Let's find out what they're doing. Better know what the administration is doing.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't get it. Mr. Hartzell, okay, there was a quick synopsis of two eleven million that we received in the one source.
Certainly.
One fifty-six for the pension fund.
Fifty-six for the pension fund, and there was, yes, there were a small portion that went to pay for consultants, but there were also bonds that were existing on the water and sewer funds previous to that that had to be de-feasted, and you had to pay off the debt on those things. So whatever, after the consultants were paid and all, throughout the debt was de-feasted, whatever was left out of that was available for the purposes of shoring up the pension funds, which in two thousand and twelve and thirteen actuaries had read as only being about forty percent adequately funded. That increase, that contribution to police buyer brought it to about ninety percent, which is good, it's much more stable, but it doesn't entirely remove the, the need to make sure that there is additional dollars coming in there, just, we don't have to spend nearly as many dollars every year to shore up the pensions adequately.
But you also don't have that thirteen million that was coming in from the water and sewer when the city scared the water.
But most of that money was never hitting the general fund either, because that was spent in a separate fund. Moreover, if that, i- if that arrangement had not occurred, we would be looking now at annual payments to meet the minimum municipal obligation on an annual basis of upwards of twenty million dollars. Right now, we're at about ten. So whatever was missing in those monies would be vastly outweighed in a very short period of time by the additional amount of money in the budget that would have to go to shore up to the pen, shore up the pensions if the lease had not been done.
So now taking this other loan means you're going to be okay, but then next year you're not going to be okay? So we go down the same road?
We have a structural that's in the neighborhood of eight million dollars, as the mayor said, and this is what is proposed by the administration to help along with the increase in the earned income tax to deal with it this year.
When we pay down the loan, then that was what, about twenty million more?
I expect so, I, I, well, I don't have all the specific duty, but that's where that extra would have been drawn off to. Yes, and you got it right as far as the total lower amount.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hartzell. Thank you, Ms. Paul. Hello, Ms. Roden.
All right. My question now becomes, what's the interest we're losing on the, the millions of dollars that's going to be used in another substance? What benefit is the interest on that money helping now that will not be a help when the money's loaned and spent?
I don't quite understand. The money, the four and a half million.
If I take the money from here, that's in the saving, and I put it over here and I spend it, what's the, the loss of the money that, that was here collecting interest that was building up so that the city isn't broke, which led to my other miserable thing? That's why we had to get bond ratings so the city could loan money and have five million dollars in the bank showing we were in the red?
Ms. Hartzell, want to take us back to that one?
I'm not sure, Mr. Hunter, there's an easy way to say this, but most of the available cash that the city has, which includes the reserves in the solid waste fund, is indeed deposited as best as we can get a return on it through the banks. And right now, the rate of return, and keeping that as liquid assets of the banks, is, is a very, very minimal interest rate, well below one percent. I'm not talking the pension funds, I'm talking about the available cash that we have to cover over our operations, and we want to ensure we have proper liquidity, and there is very little interest in the current environment that we draw on that.
All right, I'm given that answer, and I would say, if this was your house and you needed money and you had a second mortgage on your house, and then you needed more money and you put the third mortgage on your house, isn't that what we're doing? Mortgaging, 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 and nobody's paying down the debt or, or going in? So now the city is mortgaged to the point, we're bankrupt, and nobody wants to admit it. We don't have money, that somebody in the mayor's office has to say, Tommy, you're right, you've been preaching it for over two years, the city is bankrupt because we're mortgaging, 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 mortgage. Somebody has to tell the truth. What are we worth? What's a city? Julio asked a question a couple of, a month ago, what is the, the city lacking? He came up with an answer, thirty-three million that night. Wh- wh- what, where did that come from? Those were the answers he'd get. This mortgage thing is out of the question, we already did it. We, we're trying to sell the golf course, we're trying to, we might as well sell the parking authority, and let's sell this building and rent it from somebody else. Hey, let's get into the news zone, and somebody will buy it, and then we could, the, the government to do it. We're, we're, we're close enough to be involved. This is so ridiculous that I can't believe that at this point, hiring a consultant to tell us how stupid we are is important.
Who did we hire?
The mayor. The mayor is, the mayor is the guy who controls the budget, telling everybody else what to do, and guess what? He's so dumb, he, he can't think of anything but hiring a consultant. He has people right here in town that can help him and have been doing it for nothing. We've been coming to these meetings for years, trying to get our point across, and nothing happens. You can't mortgage a mortgage.
Thank you, Ms. Hartzell. No, no, thank you. Mr. Hunter.
Good evening.
Good evening.
He's, he's on the hot seat. Anyway, you know, for, for years, we've been preaching about the water and sewer, and in simplest terms, when I presented those papers, the city has to make up nine million, nine point eight million a year. You have to. I mean, and even PFM, the administration's own consultant, which charges one point seven million to do this, by the way, what's not funny? They told us on that one page, which I presented to everybody, council at the time refuses to accept it. You have to make that up for fifty years. Now, they're trying to make it up this year, they have to. This other year, they took out of that twenty million that we had left over, Mr. Glazer, you know, we had that left over?
License plate that says Fortune.
From the pension, or not the pension, from the pension money, the so-called special, you know, money that was left over from the water and sewer, and they spent it down last year, they took off twelve million, you have eight million sitting on your, your report. I mean, there's not much money left in that, but they have to make up nine million a year. Where are they going to do it? Well, we're going to take it out of the water, the solid waste fund. And in simplest terms, when I presented those papers, the city has to make up nine million, nine point eight million a year. You have to. I mean, and even PFM, the administration's own consultant, which charges one point seven million to do this, by the way. What's not funny? They told us on that one page, which I presented to everybody. Council at the time refuses to accept it. You have to make that up for fifty years. Now, they're trying to make it up this year. They have to. This other year, they took out of that twenty million that we had left over. Mr. Glaser, you know, we had that leftover? From the pension, or not the pension, from the pension money, the so-called special, you know, money that was left over from the water and sewer. And they spent it down last year. They took off twelve million. You have eight million sitting on your report. I mean, there's not much money left in that. But they have to make up nine million a year. Where are they going to do it? Well, we're going to take it out of the water, the solid waste fund. And in effect, you shouldn't do that until you know what that solid waste on, what our waste management or whatever that contract's going to be. Then maybe you can draw off of that. What he says about loaning it, why loan it? Just transfer it. He's been transferring money out of these funds for years. He's never going to pay that back. I mean, it's a nice boy to say, I'm going to pay it back. You're not. I mean, it's like paying yourself back from one pocket to the other. I mean, just say you're going to transfer it. But once, you have to wait until you see what that is going to cost us. Because that money was put in that fund by the garbage collection fees that we paid. The three seventy-five built that up over the years. That's where it came from. And the recyclables that we got money for. Yeah, we had that money in there. And he knows it, they know it. Now, I'm not criticizing him for doing this. You have to get the money. EIT without raising taxes, you got to go there. Where are you going to go? There's no other place. Taxes, EIT, or that fund, or the combination, and bonds. We can't be going for bonds, like Tommy said. We've been borrowing forever. Within a year after we did the water and sewer, January of this year, what did we take up? Fifteen million plus a six million dollar loan. Two of them. Yeah, you took off some bonds. Some of those bonds, they don't even pay the principal. You have to look at this better. I mean, there's no end. You've got to come up with nine million. Take your choice. There's not a good choice. You gave away free cash money, which LCA said fifteen point five million. It's in the record, which I questioned him here three years ago, to LCA. He didn't want to answer, but he told the truth. Fifteen point five million of free cash money. And from that, in the first year LCA had the water and sewer, they had a three million dollar free cash number. They're not going to have that anymore. They're not going to have it anymore. But you've got to make up nine million. Figure it out.
Mr. Pearson?
Dennis Pearson, nine forty-two St. Holmes Street. Take a look at the, they're, they're taking a loan for seven years. And they say that they're paying back the money every year. So how do you pay this back? Obviously, you need a surplus to pay it back. You need to cut services to pay it back, else you're not going to pay it back. Or raise taxes. Pay the tax. So they're presenting that option to you. And, boy, we have come a long way since initial decision was made to separate solid waste from the general budget. Now we're using solid waste money and trying to put it back into the general budget. We had done dumb things during the, during many years. Like taking the budget out of the fire company, out of the general, you know, budget one time, and relying on federal government block grants. And then flying, we couldn't do that anymore, so they had to put it all back in. Then flying away that you didn't have to raise the taxes. Whatever. I mean, that's, this is all the game is, game is for, and we don't want to raise taxes, but the game is, game is for politicians to say throughout the years that they haven't raised this, haven't raised this, but really are setting up a situation that, a disaster. You need a surplus in order to pay this money back.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mr. Hudson, please. Mr. Fegley?
Evening, Council Rich Fegley, one thousand two South Bradford Street. Um, as I was up here a few weeks ago and stated, um, and actually, Mr. Hanlon put up the Palowski PFM twenty-twelve PowerPoint. And in the PowerPoint, it stated simply that we needed to get four and a half million dollars in our royalty fee every year. And if we didn't get that, then the whole plan didn't work. Yet, we voted, you voted for it. You voted for the water lease. Even though it said we had to get four and a half million a year in order to make it work, we decided that it was okay for the mayor to agree upon five hundred thousand a year. So there is the four million. There's part of the nine or ten million that we're short. So if we're raising EIT five and a half million, and we're borrowing four and a half million, we've got to come up with ten million. So four million was supposed to come every year from the LCA. We're only getting a half a million instead of four and a half million. So we're going to be short every year for the next fifty years for four million. So, uh, that's, we can fluff that up, the EIT will cover that. So you got the EIT for the next fifty years. It's never going back down. So it seemed like the EIT was what we needed to take care of the pension crisis, or it sounds like we're going to need still another five million dollars. So wait a second, what happened to the windfall money? And why was it called windfall money? And why did six of the seven of you vote to spend five million of the water and sewer lease money? Now, I know none of you are going to answer me this evening as to why you voted for the spending of the five million dollars. And we all know that it's going to become part of the FBI case with Mr. Ita Itia and the one point four million dollars of property that we never, ever needed. We're not doing anything with it now. There's no plan. The parks, the recreation department has no plan for it. There's no money to do anything with the one point four million dollars that we spent. You, six of you, voted for it, okay? You all voted for it. You didn't look at the appraisal. You didn't see what Palowski convinced all of you to do. And you voted yes for it. Your job as council members are to investigate this and to check the mayor. And you didn't do it. So there's five million. Why don't you guys fix that? Why aren't you talking right now about what of that five million wasn't spent and how that money can be spent now on the budget for two thousand and sixteen? So you're just going to agree with Palowski and raise the EIT and borrow money from your other pocket? And it's true. Every year in the future, we're going to be short four million dollars, and now we're also going to be short six hundred and some thousand because we borrowed money from ourselves. So the money that we're borrowing this year, have you seen a five-year plan? The projection, does it show you, do we borrow this money every year now? So obviously, a five-year budget and to project it out, which, I thought my mom we were supposed to get it, Mr. Hirschman. So I, I don't know where that's stated in the city charter, but a five-year projection from the administration would help you see, oh, yeah, every year, we're going to have to borrow another four or five million dollars from something like the solid waste fund. Well, if this is, how much more do we have in the solid waste fund to take out that next year, our other pocket? And will we borrow money from the solid waste fund, pay from the solid waste fund for this year? So the EIT's not going to go away. And then Palowski's plan, with the PFM plan, was to get the four and a half million dollars. Then, why did you, why did you approve the water lease deal? So, a- and the five million dollars, why was that spent last year? I sat here in front of all of you and said, you can't spend it. We need that money for the future. And you voted yes. Only Ms. Ikenwal was the only one to question it, to say, this didn't make sense. And you all voted, six of the seven of you. You should all be ashamed, okay? You don't know where the money's coming from. You don't know what you're doing with the budget. You should just say, I'm not going to vote on anything because I don't know anything. And you're all remain silent. So I ask any of you to speak up and defend yourselves.
Mr. Fegley, in your statement, please.
I think you should all be ashamed.
Thank you. Anyone else in, uh, public? Mr. Tryon, go ahead.
This may be a little longer, I'm not sure. Um, I agree with everything that's been said. There's, there's a hole in the budget that everybody's trying to say doesn't exist, and Ms. Ikenwal knows that. I think you know that. I wanted to say, um, Mr. President, Mr. Glaser has said that he's fine with a four point five billion dollar loan because of loan. Um, I think we need to look a little more closely than that. I don't think that's the answer, Mr. President. I don't think that's the answer at all. And I guess that's it, because everybody said everything else. This, this should be tabled also until the fourteenth because it's related to the, the trash hoard contract, and who knows what else is going to be revealed tomorrow in the newspaper, not from the administration, but in the newspaper or the day after. You know, as long as I do, who, you know, anything can happen tomorrow. And it probably will. This latest, this, this latest business with Mr. Strathorne is so egregious that there's no way we should consider this tonight. Ms. Ikenwal is absolutely right. And if it's considered, um, after you've been made aware of what the problems for voting on this are, uh, you could all be liable for voting on something. Um, there's, there's a standard of recklessness or, you got to do due diligence. There's a se- se- there's a standard of recklessness or gross negligence that can apply when you've been, when you've all been informed of the dangers and you go ahead. And as I said, who knows what's going to be revealed tomorrow? I never dreamed that was, that was revealed on, on Monday would be revealed. Even I never dreamed that. It was so egregious. So I don't think we can go ahead. I don't think there's any way possible.
Thanks, Mr. Tryon.
Yeah, points have been raised about the water lease. Why did we accept a five hundred thousand dollar payment instead of the four point five million that we knew that we needed? I mean, we need an answer to that, right? I mean, people have sat in these meetings, I know you guys don't get made a lot. You're stifled and measly, and we appreciate what you do. But people came out here for free to, to challenge the mayor on this stuff and to try to do due diligence as, as citizens, right? And I, I have to wonder too, that, you know, you look at LCA, you look at Western Lehigh County, where water is a huge business. And I have to wonder, was there some kind of deal? Because now we know there's all kinds of deals in Allentown. There's not just J.B. Rotten deals, and there's not just, you know, FBI pleas. There's other kinds of deals. And here we have, in the, in Western Lehigh County, Coca-Cola, Nestle, Niagara, Sam Adams. Who am I forgetting? There's six or seven huge companies out there that use a hell of a lot of water. And I have to wonder if the citizens of Allentown are subsidizing that at this point. And, and I think we probably are. So we can now buy cheap water bottled in Verhynigsville, you know, because there were possibly kickbacks or things that were, deals that were made on the side. Who knows? What I do know is that the reason most of you voted for the water deal is because you trusted that Ed Palowski was telling the truth. You trusted that his consultants are telling the truth. You trusted that he was doing the right thing. You trusted, okay? You trusted it. And I would just beg that you not make that mistake anymore. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Palowski. Any other comments from the public? No other comments from the public. Mr. Hanlon, call a vote on, um, Bill sixty-eight, the solid waste fund loan.
Bill sixty-eight, uh, Ms. Ikenwal.
Yes.
Mr. Glaser.
Yes.
Mr. Grady.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Ms. Moana.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Oh, this is ridiculous. How much information do you guys need so you're not rubber stamped? This is ridiculous.
Please.
You guys are all good.
Rubber stamp is not the right word. Not a good word. This is ridiculous. None of you guys deserve any credit.
Uh, Mr. Um, Hanlon, we stated that Bill sixty-nine, uh, Bill seventy would be, have a special meeting on December ninth. Call to Bill seventy-one, the liquid fuels budget.
Bill seventy-one adopts the liquid fuels fund budget for two thousand and sixteen.
Comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Mr. Hanlon, call a vote.
Mr. Glaser.
Yes.
Mr. Grady.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Ms. Moana.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ikenwal.
Yes.
Bill seventy-two, trash fund budget.
Trash fund budget. Uh, ordinance of the city, uh, Allentown adopting the two thousand and sixteen trash fund.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Any comments from my colleagues about the trash fund budget? Any comments from the public? Mr. Hanlon, call a vote.
Mr. Grady.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Ms. Moana.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ikenwal.
Yes.
Mr. Glaser.
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon, Bill seventy-three, the golf course fund.
Bill seventy-three adopts the golf course fund.
Any comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Mr. Hanlon, call a vote.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Ms. Moana.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ikenwal.
Yes.
Mr. Glaser.
Yes.
Mr. Grady.
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon, Bill seventy-four, equipment fund.
Bill seventy-four adopts the equipment fund.
Any comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Mr. Hanlon, call a vote.
Ms. Moana.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ikenwal.
Yes.
Mr. Glaser.
Yes.
Mr. Grady.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon, Bill seventy-five, the risk fund.
Bill seventy-five adopts the two thousand and sixteen risk management.
Comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Call a vote, Mr. Hanlon.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ikenwal.
Yes.
Mr. Glaser.
Yes.
Mr. Grady. Hendricks.
Yes.
Ms. Moana.
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon, Bill seventy-six, the debt fund.
Bill seventy-six adopts the two thousand and sixteen debt obligation.
Mr. Uh, any comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Mr. Hanlon, call a vote.
Uh, Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ikenwal.
Yes.
Mr. Glaser.
Yes.
Mr. Grady.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Ms. Moana.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Bill seventy-seven, nine eleven fund.
Bill seventy-seven adopts the two thousand and sixteen E nine one one fund.
Comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Mr. Hanlon, call a vote.
Uh, Ms. Ikenwal.
Yes.
Mr. Glaser.
Yes.
Mr. Grady.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Ms. Moana.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon, Bill seventy-eight, the grant fund.
Bill seven, seventy-eight adopts the two thousand and sixteen grant fund.
Comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Miss Heffantrager.
I couldn't afford the, uh, book. So what is this, actually? I just haven't read it anywhere, seen it anywhere. What is the grant fund ordinance? Or grant fund, and then it has attached with it a grant fund ordinance or something? So what is that?
Mr. Hartzell? Grant fund?
Mr. Heffantrager, we receive grants primarily from the federal government.
Ms. Ikenwal.
Yes.
Mr. Glazer.
Yes.
Mr. Greedy.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Ms. Motte.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ikenwal.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ikenwal.
Yes.
Mr. Glazer.
Yes.
Mr. Greedy.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Ms. Motte.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ikenwal.
Yes.
Mr. Glazer.
Yes.
Mr. Greedy.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Ms. Motte.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ikenwal.
Yes.
Mr. Glazer.
Yes.
Mr. Greedy.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell.
Yes.